I call the City of Shelton Study Session Meeting to order. First item on our business is our Weekly Commission Reports. Commissioner McDowell?
May I go first this time?
I don't care.
Okay, sure. Well, it's a quiet week, except it's gonna start picking up 'cause school's starting, so there'll be lots of things to go do. This week, I have, on Friday, I have my Women's Republican Luncheon that meets this first Friday of each month, so I'll be doing that. And since we're not here next week, I left board next Tuesday morning. Just thought I'd announce that now.
Oh.
Because we won't be here until Tuesday evening, so I announced my morning meeting. Left board meeting next Tuesday at 8:00 a.m.
All right. Mr. Moore, did you have something?
I do. After being gone a week, it seems like I've been gone forever, so I'm happy to be back. Had some family issues to take care of. So this week, the Community Pride Celebration at the high school, I plan to attend that tomorrow evening. I'm excited about that. And then on Thursday, I have a Mason and Transit Authority Board Meeting, and that's all I have for this week.
Okay. I have no scheduled meetings for this week, and that concludes our Weekly Commission Reports.
Can I ask Tracy something?
Sure.
Is that Community Pride meeting tomorrow night?
Yes.
At the high school? What time?
I believe that the music starts at 5:30. They have a band there, and then the program starts at 6:30.
I'll probably be there, too.
Yeah, I think, I think that that is the right time.
Okay.
Okay, general public comment. I think we have one person signed in.
Marilyn Vogler.
Okay.
Good afternoon, ma'am.
Sorry, just be on your good hon-- I don't have the three-minute button here, so be on your good honor, or whatever.
Marilyn Vogler, 420 East Poplar. I want first to point out an article that appeared in the Olympia Newspaper today. "Super Down-Size Tiny House on Tour." This is one of the container freight houses, 320 square feet. The Pierce County Master Builders Association held a container freight house, a container house contest among local colleges. And this one was designed by, I think, the students at Bellevue Community College. They hope to sell that one for $150,000, but are saying they can probably build them for forty, thirty or forty thousand dollars, which falls in the category of affordable housing. I want to read one brief paragraph. It says, "The interesting part of the project is getting through the permitting project, process. That's the hard part. Permitting agencies have yet to develop rules that speak directly to tiny house, the tiny house movement. I hope our permitting people, our public works people, our commissioners, our city administrator are looking to the future in developing rules that will be compatible with and facilitate the building of tiny houses." The second thing I want to mention is a comment that was made at last week's commission meeting about the reduction in fees having brought about an increase actually for duplex owners, at least that's the way I understood it, that somehow what you all did in February meant duplex owners were paying more than they had been. I don't recall, and I think I was at all of the meetings about that fee reduction, but I don't recall any discussion of an impact on fees for duplexes or multifamily. If it was unintended, I hope you will rectify that immediately. And if you really did intend to kind of slip that under the rug while you were reducing other fees, I hope you will reconsider, because increased fees for multifamily housing, whether it's duplexes, triplexes, apartment buildings, really are a disincentive to affordable housing, and that's where we have to be moving. So I hope you'll look into that, that you will take action to correct it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
That's it for now.
That's it for now. We have another opportunity a little later on. And are we ready for a reading of the consent agenda?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and could we please have that?
The consent agenda, vouchers numbered 12406 through 12485, in the amount of $210,374.19.
Is a motion approved, the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
I second that.
There's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The agenda passes. There is no old business at this meeting, but there will be an item under new business. And I'd like to turn our meeting now over to our Parks and Recreation Director, Mark Ziegler, to talk to us about some art.
Thank you, Your Honored Commissioners. Once again, bringing to you recommendations from the Shelton Arts Commission for artist placement in the Civic Center Rotating Art Gallery. The City of Shelton called for artists to submit to this process with a deadline of August 19th, 2016. We had two artists submit work for placement in the gallery. The Arts Commission met on August 23rd to jury the works, and bringing to you these recommendations today from two artists. One is Catherine Irving. I believe you have copies of the art in front of you, I see on the table. So Catherine Irving has a few two-dimensional pieces and then some three-dimensional pieces as well that will be placed with your approval in the display cabinet at the top of the stairs to the entrance to the city offices upstairs. And then Steve Hendrickson has five pieces as well that are being recommended today with the approval of the City Commission to place us on the consent agenda for next week. I believe it's September 6th meeting. The Arts Commission would install the work on September 7th, and the artwork would be up through November 30th, and you will hear from me sometime around that time with new recommendations from the Arts Commission for, for new artists.
Well, is there any questions or comments at this time?
I, I just went to say, I'm eternally so impressed with the quality of the art that we have on display, so thank you for keeping it coming.
Absolutely.
Looks good to me.
Is there possible way down the future getting some downstairs cabinets for people for this type of stuff? I know the top of the stair, is that a safety issue, or?
It just would have to be the right location. We have to find the right, right location for it and have the right, right size and proximity.
I'm not sure if a lot of people go up, I mean, during the week, there's people that go up.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, you know, so it'd be kinda cool to have some downstairs.
Yeah, I think.
Cabinets.
I think the Arts Commission would appreciate any opportunity to display more public art at any time.
So, for example, like Kathy's husband, if he built the custom cabinet with locking apparatus and wanted to donate it to the city, we could find a place to put it.
Who? My husband?
You, you brought it up. Yeah. Can he make?
He can umpire a baseball game, but he can't, he can't build anything.
Well, it is possible that someone might be able to help make something like that if that was, well, more people would see it down. I kinda thought about that, too, in the past. Just the employees kinda go up there almost, you know.
Well, we, we do have public works in Building Department, offices, Parks and Recreation, offices such as that where the public are entering, so.
Now, does Greg stop and look at the artwork upstairs?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
So I think we all like it, and we're all gonna go with it.
We are.
So I think we'll go ahead and follow your recommendation to place us on the consent agenda for September 6th, 2016.
Yeah, great.
Have an opportunity for Administrator Report?
Couple things. So, we conducted our Finance Director interviews on Thursday. We are moving forward and having discussions with one of the candidates. I would expect that by the time we meet next time, that we will have an update on that. We also are starting to move forward with the Management Assistant role, so Vicki looks role, and we'll be working on that this week. That one could take some time to find a replacement for Vicki, but we are gonna look as much as possible to see what we can do with that role, and then we'll move right into the Community Economic Development Director role as well. Beyond that, we're gonna have Darren give a quick update on an event from this morning, and then we'll also have Greg give some public works information.
As many of you aware, we have a bomb threat at the courthouse. It's a county building, but unfortunately, because we've always done it that way, it becomes a city issue. And so, unfortunately, I'm just out of the area when it happens. The guys do the training, do the protocol, handle it appropriately, and it was all clear in all that.
Thank you.
Greg?
Yeah, I wanted to speak to, the Commission took action on some utility rate corrections that were found by our Finance Director, Kathy Byerly. Well, it was early, late winter, early spring in February, and we brought those in front and back before the Commission to explain and the corrections that were needed in order to make it a level playing field between specifically some of the duplex-related items. And sit down and get it in front of me here. This is a copy of the strikeout version of that that was brought to the Commission in early February. And you can see it changed both stormwater, some stormwater language, sewer language, and water language within the codes, really to level the playing field, because specifically with duplexes, and I'll speak to the water-related ones specifically, duplexes, older duplexes, some of them were built with a single water meter, and, and then both dwellings were served off of that single meter. Well, for years and years, they only had to pay one base rate, and then they paid a consumption charge. When we did this correction, it changed it from dwelling unit, or from, you know, the single dwelling unit to, to duplex. So the vision here is that the newer duplexes had two meters set, and so each of them were paying, as they should, a base rate charge and a consumption charge for each of the dwelling units. The ones that were built in the older years that had single meters, they needed to actually receive a correct bill so that they were similar to and exactly like the other dwelling duplexes. So the code was changed to, to reflect the change in it saying dwelling unit versus account. And so as you go through here, there were some other related changes in stormwater that also added the dwelling unit, and that's on page one. A reference to state law with regard to utility matters and drainage was added. The service area was changed from city limits to service area in the sewer area, because we had sewer service in, in areas outside the city limits, so it was changed to be correct there. These are really a lot of just housekeeping-related items. Outside of the city limits, again, there were changes made there to be correct. The indirect cost allocation was set at 15% in the old ordinance, and of course, that changes yearly with the IDC now, so that was changed on page three. Same on page four at the top. Page five, emergency call-out, same IDC change. Then we get down into the monthly sewer rates, and it changed the word from meter to dwelling unit to be, you know, correct. Anyway, you can go through these, it really, the biggest change was to do with water service, and as I mentioned, we, we changed it to be specifically to the dwelling units, so consistent across the board, if you have a duplex, you get charged for each dwelling unit of that duplex, just like it should be. It should be a level playing field, whether you built your duplex in the 40s or you built it in the 2000s. And so those are the changes in here. Be happy to respond to any questions.
I have to make a comment first. I own a duplex inside the city limits of Shelton, so I'm going to excuse myself from this conversation, because I don't want any, any appearance of any, any comment or anything pro or, or con on this issue. I think that's what commissioners should do when they own property that is being talked about in this issue. So I won't take part in the conversation or the vote on this issue. So, at this point, I will chair the meeting, and the other two commissioners, and ask them questions and do whatever. Maybe our city administrators want to chime in, but I cannot do it, because I own a duplex.
I do have a comment, question.
Certainly.
So you have a duplex, and the meter ran to just, just one duplex? Or did it run to both?
With the older duplexes, you'd, a lot of them were set with one meter. It would go into the structure, and then sort of split to both dwelling units.
Okay.
So the, the owner, whoever got the bill, I don't know how they would distribute it. They either pay it themselves, or they may split it in half, but there was no way to know how much one unit used versus what another one used. And that's still the case with those old ones. We didn't force them to go in and add another meter so that they were separately metered, but we do change it now to each dwelling unit gets a separate bill.
So this is running some more money for the owner, the people who own the duplex?
The people that own the duplex, if they were an old, single-meter duplex, would be required to make, just like newer duplexes, you'd have a base rate plus your consumption for each of the dwelling units in that, in that unit. And that's really the change, the, the housekeeping change that was needed, so that, like I say, we, we weren't chargingly different depending on when you built your duplex.
All right. I may have more questions for you.
Sure.
I do.
Oh, yeah. There's the shut-off issue, too. When you have a single meter and they don't pay the bill, whether it's either one of the tenants, or the landlord, or the owner, and we go out and shut off your meter, obviously you're shutting it off to both buildings, and that's kinda problematic. So I'm not exactly sure how we're dealing with that. I'd have to get back to you on that. But in all reality, we should be able to shut off each dwelling unit separately, but of course, we can't if there's only one meter.
So why is the owner receiving a larger bill? I mean, the water isn't, there isn't any more water being used than there had been.
Remember, a water bill is a combination of your base rate.
Right.
Together with your consumption.
Right.
If you only have one bill, or one count for both dwellings, you're only getting one base rate charge.
I understand, okay.
And then the consumption may be a little higher, because your consumption for both units.
Okay, I understand.
But that's, that's the.
The base rate is, is kinda, that's the issue.
And for 16, I believe that was around $10.60. It's actually on page six.
Okay.
It's $10.60 for a three-quarter inch meter.
Okay.
It's your base rate.
You answered my question.
I appreciate the clarification. I, I watched last week's meeting this morning and thought, oh, yeah, I remember that. So I appreciate the clarification on this. I do remember the discussions, and I remember we were all in agreement that this type of housekeeping is necessary from time to time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do that. One other item, are we done with that one, Mayor?
I, yeah, I can't comment on it, so I imagine if you're done, you're done.
Okay. The other is to do with water options that we were bringing, hopefully bringing forward.
Can I, can I bring, let's go back to this one for a second. I'll, I'll ask a public question about this. Here's where I think the confusion comes in, just a general statement, is you have existing duplexes, and then you have future duplexes. I think I was when we talked about it, for, I did not think we were going to be going back and charging existing duplex people more money. That may be where these commissioners were or weren't. I thought this was for future. So just, just a thought out there, is when we change, when we're gonna change rules and stuff, usually we, any new ones, we, we do that. So I'm, either way, or whatever, I just think, when I voted for it, I did not think we were gonna go back and then say, okay, now the one that does this, you have to pay more money. Usually it's, anything from this point forward, we do that. I think the issue of shutting off the water is a serious one, and maybe the city has to be the ones to work with the home on changing, you know, changing that. I don't know, but that sounds like a kind of a safety, kind of like a thing, you know? You can't shut water off to somebody that didn't, you know, so. But back to my issue on the duplex, I was thinking that was all future, because we were talking about the UGA and, and things like that kinda in the conversation. Not which, I don't care which way this group goes, I just wanted to make a statement. When I voted for originally, I did not think we were gonna take existing people and raise their rates.
Is, um, oh, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to respond.
Okay.
Of course, any new buildings that come in, if, if you came in today for a duplex, you would get two meters set, and the codes would be consistent with it.
Right.
So there isn't, there isn't anything, you know, going forward, other than aligning with the developmental requirements of, of the current code. This, again, is for those that only had one meter set initially, and we aren't retroactively charging them for all those years that, you know, the meter.
No.
You know, that, that wouldn't be right either, I agree. But at least from this point forward, they'd be the same as any other duplex. That's all the code change was, was meant to be. And it, it does mean that they pay another base rate, as they should, because they're a separate dwelling, but that, I, I believe we talked about that, but I, I didn't listen to the news or anything.
So, for example, I'm not, for example, if you owned a duplex and you paid $10, now you are to pay $20, which means the owner of that duplex would raise the rent or require the people renting. The people renting, under their existing agreement and whatnot with the owner, they now got a little bump overnight. They have to pay more money. Whether it's the owner that pays, or the tenant pays, someone's gotta pay now additional money inside the city limits. Not retro, not, not future, this is just kinda like, okay, now you gotta do it, from this point forward, you have to pay more money, right? And so how much on a duplex, is it just $10? Is that what it is?
The second dwelling unit's base fee would be another $10.60 for this, 2016.
Okay. So I don't care how it all goes, I'm just trying to make sure I understand for, you know, where we are and what we're doing. So it's only $10?
But if you have four or five duplexes, or you have apartments.
Well, it's for each dwelling unit, you'd have that additional charge, yeah. Going from one meter to two meters for a duplex would require another $10.60 per duplex of additional cost.
Excuse me, Greg. If I remember correctly, this conversation was separate from the whole fee reduction that we did from that conversation. This was a different, different, a whole different piece.
I, I don't.
I don't, I don't remember me being in the seat when this was discussed. So it had to be before the fee reductions.
No, it says it was introduced in February.
It was introduced in February, and you guys adopted it in, in February 29th, and all three of you signed it here, so I, I don't remember exactly what was all discussed, but.
And just for information, I, the, the person that came last week that talked about it, I think they have got new bills for, much more than just $10 more. That's, see, sometimes we say, this is all some miss, so I think we need to be very clear, because the person that, I don't think they would've probably even walked in the door if it really was just $10 more. They might have, but that's something that I think, if it is, I mean, we gotta, if we say it's $10 more, then that's all it is, but the person that walked in the door last week, I don't think would've done that if it had been just a $10.
Well, it was this ordinance change, Mayor, that brought forward, whatever their changes were. Like I say, this affected the storm rate, and it affected the sewer rate, so they very well may have had additional charges based on those.
That, okay, that's, yeah.
Yeah.
So the person would be paying, and they added on more than that, too.
Right.
So that would be like 30 or 40?
I, I don't know, Mayor.
Okay, but you understand that if a citizen was complaining about that, and overnight, they have to go to their renter, and they have to say, you were here under this existing thing, and now I got to raise your rent by $40, because the city just put $40 more on our building. It would be an automatic, pre-existing, you would have to get that, it would, it's more than $10. That's, that's what we're looking at. So just when you all think about this, it's not just $10. It's an increase of the other things you're talking about. Usually when we vote increases, we do it to everybody, kinda like in the city, or we do it to future, like a future, this would be for a future. So we're kinda selecting out, in a way, duplexes, and we're saying, okay, okay, lady that you're on your food voucher and your, your rental voucher, tomorrow, or next month, you have to pay $40 more, because the city has put a $40 fee on this duplex. Just automatic, just from day one, or whatever. So that would be where the complaint came, probably last year, it wasn't $10, it was 30 or 40 bucks, maybe, and that would be a fairly big rent increase in a low-income area.
Maybe we could invite him back or get some clarification as to the amount he was questioning, so that we're not just going on guesswork as part of this discussion.
Yeah, I don't like guesswork.
That's a good idea.
So we, we talked on Friday. I talked to him on the Friday. Correct me if I'm wrong, this sounds, the $10 is just for water?
Yes.
So the, the extra, what were the other fees?
Must've been.
And from the research we did this past week, it looks like six or seven years ago, there was a change that intended to include duplexes that were existing, that did not get included, and sat, because of the way the code was written, sat for that time without an increase. When it was caught last year, this correction was brought forward, so.
Yeah, okay.
There was some discrepancy between new duplexes and old duplexes that sat for a while, but for folks that didn't know, this did hit 'em pretty quickly. And how many addresses are we talking about, like the speaker we had last week?
In rough numbers, around 40 duplexes, I think, were affected by this change. The change came about from when the Finance Department was moving to utilize the new Tyler system, and Kathy was going through the particular elements so that you could get the bills all automated and everything. That's when she found these errors and discrepancies, and that's why, actually, I, we didn't bring it back, but it was brought back to the Commission in, in February and discussed, so that we could be all consistent going forward with the Tyler Finance System, and, you know.
I think we need more clarification on it, and I'm not gonna vote on it, because I don't care what the city does to me. That's the way it is. I'm not gonna fight for my issue on, on a rate increase, but I will just try and say a couple of comments, that we should know exactly how much it is, how many it's gonna affect, and the fact that a citizen really is paying the rent, they're gonna be affected by this decision, and because of our screw-up six years ago, or whatever, that the landlord and the tenant did not have anything to do with this, except that all of a merry Christmas, you are now paying $40 a month more in rent. I think it should be phased in or something, not, you can bill me for my duplex, I don't care, but for anybody else, usually you don't automatically say, oh, we made a mistake, now it's $40 a month more. I don't like the way that feels. But I wanna know, is it really 40, or is it 10? And how many people are being affected? And, you know, maybe they should get a notice and say, here's what we've done, this where we are, what do you think about raising your rent $40 a month? I mean, usually you just don't do that. Usually. So I think we need to think about it for another week.
Well, there isn't really a motion here.
No.
This is just clarification on the.
Yeah.
Right.
On this ordinance that we adopted, so I think it needs a lot.
But we did, yeah, we did put this, this is, or they're getting the bills now. And if we only have one complaint, maybe that's, maybe it's not that big of a deal. But I, I do like real numbers. It's not 10, it's maybe 30 or 40, and those people didn't do anything wrong. We somehow missed it, and now we're trying to automatically say, okay, now you gotta do this. Well, sometimes, you know, you gotta phase things in or something. I just feel for low-income people.
So it's just not duplexes? Am I right? It's hotel, motel, triplex, multifamily, mobile home, trailer parks, government facilities, and industrial customers? Is that what we're looking at?
The, the, the changes in the code that happened, I highlighted. Everything else is just the way it always was.
The same it was.
All right.
Just the highlighting.
This, this was what was reviewed and acted on by the Commission back in February. I, I, if you want us to, we can go back and figure out how many people were affected and to what degree. I don't know what that amount of time would take to figure that out, but if that's your desire, we will find a way.
Well, I would just count the duplexes, right? I mean, it's pretty easy to know how many duplexes we got, don't, don't we have?
I don't know.
I don't know. Maybe, maybe it is hard. I don't know. The other deal is, is it $10, or is it $40? And I guess, I'll turn it over to the city administrator to try and see a little more information on this, you know, whatever, and again, do what you're gonna do with my duplex, I don't care, because I don't know. And again, do what you're gonna do with my duplex, I don't care because I don't want to vote in that, you know? But I do know for, just like Marilyn said, if we're raising $40 a month on a low-income duplex to a low-income family, you know, because we didn't do it six years ago or whatever when we were supposed to, then they're the ones being punished and maybe they shouldn't be the ones being punished, you know? I think we've talked this one through pretty well. Okay, thank you for bringing that forward, Greg. All right, next to general public comment. Oh, just have to sign in. Let's let him go first because he, you've already spoken once, so just sign in your name in three minutes.
I think you have to sign in first.
Yeah, you do have, you do have to and.
I wouldn't want to file late.
Nope, nope, no, no.
Randy Lewis.
Okay.
I'll finish slinging up. Yeah, to Marilyn's point, she'll probably talk about it. I watched the tape, maybe I wasn't paying attention, but it seemed like he was talking about more of a new construction or something. I don't know, it shouldn't, doesn't sound like it would be affected here. Other comment I would make is it can't be that hard to get the data on which are duplexes. I mean, you're already identifying them somehow in order to make the extra charge. So that information is in there somewhere, it can't be that difficult. I agree with Gary, I think something like this, it doesn't sound like there was a heads-up given to anybody. Maybe there was, I don't know, but I was just wondering, it sounds like every water going to a duplex, before you're charging one base fee and then whatever the total consumption was for the duplex. And now you're charging two base fees. I'm just wondering, and maybe you explained this, I'm just wondering, of the two units, how are you allocating the total consumption if you don't have separate meters? How does that work?
I don't know. Generally, we don't talk, have questions to those. You can just, this is, this is general public comment, so.
Okay.
You can say those questions and then just.
My question is, I'm just curious how, it's easy to say, okay, there's two or three or whatever units, therefore base fee is 10 or whatever times the number of units. But if you only have one meter, well then how do you go about allocating the consumption among the different units if you only have one meter? That was my question. Which?
I would just say generally speaking in that, the water bill will be included by the landlord in the rent probably.
Okay. You've got to figure out how to allocate.
Because, yeah, you can't, well, yeah, or you put a private meter on it, but.
Yeah, I think the landlord, it's just a lump sum. There's 10 apartments.
It's only one.
Well, one meter, but there's 10 apartments.
They would never have that.
Right.
It's only on a duplex.
Okay, all right. Very good.
Okay, yeah, you're in, okay? Marilyn, did you want to come up?
Marilyn Vogler, 420 East Poplar. If this is to level the playing field, then we ought to charge similarly for triplexes. What is the difference between a triplex and a duplex, really? And then if we charge for triplexes, let us charge for apartment buildings because those are separate dwelling units as well. It seems to me that if the landlord includes utilities in one's rent, then shut-off is not a problem. The landlord pays the utility bill and it's a matter of collecting the rent from the renter. We all know that building affordable, single-family housings is not possible unless we're talking about tiny homes and we have to work on permits for that, that a normal, average-sized home cannot be built and be affordable. The answer is in multifamily housing and we should do everything we can do as a city to make the construction of multifamily housing feasible. If these are rental units and there is one meter, and I don't see why if they're rental units and the landlord pays the utilities, there have to be multiple meters, then there should be one charge. If code requires individual meters, then it seems to me a level playing field demands any multifamily unit, whether it is two units or 100, be billed in a comparable manner.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else? Mr. Olson?
Your questions as to fairness, whether it's fair to an existing duplex to be charged now, well, you know, you think about making it a level playing field, how many years did they go by without contributing to the system? You know, probably a lot of these duplexes never paid any kind of a general facility charge to begin with because the city didn't address those back in the day. So I don't know that you're, you're on the right track when you, when you talk about fairness because each family has an impact on the city's infrastructure, whether it's stormwater, sewer, or water. And we should all be paying a fair amount to the future, you know, taking care of this infrastructure and the uptake and the maintenance on it. And as long as you're at it, I agree with Marilyn that the triplexes should be billed each meter and each resident on that. And also I think that you've missed all these illegal accessory dwelling units that are out there. Converted garages in the back of a house that is a separate address even. Many of them are 117 and a half or something where they're only using one meter. I think that if you're gonna talk fairness, then those should be, should be picked up too and put on this system because they're being served by one meter and there's two residences, having an impact on the city's infrastructure, so.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. I will make clarification there a little bit. The fairness isn't to the landlord, the fairness is to the renter.
Still an impact.
Yeah. And so what I'm trying to say is, low-income people having an automatic $40 addition in their budget is because we didn't somehow do it when it was supposed to be done, that's not, that's where the fairness issue goes. So nobody likes surprises, but I think we'll, we'll talk about it and we'll see what we can do. All right, I think we beat that horse pretty dead. So next is administration final touches.
One note about the options for our well.
Yes, we had hoped to bring back to the commission next Tuesday evening, the discussion on the $400,000 with regard to pressure line out to, from well one to well three where it would connect to Upper Mountain View. As staff has dove deeper into the details of how to make that work and the operational changes, pros and cons, we're gonna need another week, if not longer, to make sure we have all the details for the commission. We don't want to not be complete, so stay tuned for that to be brought back.
Thank you.
At a later date.
Okay.
That's it for us.
Okay. Our next meeting will be, because of the holiday, will be next Tuesday and this meeting is adjourned.[1773.16]